Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 22nd meeting of the Village Board of Trustees. It's a workshop meeting. We have two chunks of work before us tonight, one related to engineering and a second related to work in their business that we have before us. So we have a few announcements. Yard waste and garbage pickup is tomorrow morning, May 23rd. Remember to put it out in paper bags or in bins that can be dumped into the truck and emptied. We just got an announcement this afternoon from County Executive Burn announcing that he will be hosting another of his Trailblazing with Burn series tomorrow morning, Thursday, 24th, from 8:30 to 9:30. Apologize for the late notice, but we didn't get it until late this afternoon either. They're starting at Foundry Dock Park next to the chapel on Market Street. He usually does small update on what he's got going on and then walks with folks on a selected trail. The Memorial Day Parade is Monday. It's hosted by the American Legion. The lineup is at 8:30, beginning here at Village Hall and continuing west down Main Street. Parade steps off, steps off at nine and will follow the traditional route with honor stops at the Veterans Remembrance Memorials in Cold Spring and Nelsonville, as well as the cemeteries on Mountain and Cedar, concluding with a ceremony at the Royal Cemetery on the Skill Road. Pard Scro, who is, I believe he is the last World War II veteran. He is also turning 100 or has just turned 100. He will be the Grand Marshal. And the next item is opportunity to modify or add an agenda item. I would just like to add setting the time for police candidate interviews for next Wednesday. Are you okay with knocking that out of the way quickly and getting it done? Hi Rebecca. So Eliza, Laura and I, we're all available on Wednesday. What's, are you in the city that day?
Yeah.
So the earliest you can get in is?
Like, seven is definitely the earliest.
So do you want to say 7:30? Sure. That work for you? Okay. So we will need to post that because as a board meeting, we'll have quorum that it will be an executive session. Just as personnel. Okay. Now, moving on. So we have with us, joining us online is Will Angelillo. He is from our, the village is Consulting Engineer, Han Engineering. We've been working with Will since the beginning of 2022. He has been focused primarily on our stormwater system and the failings thereof. Our first project queued up for repairs from the July 2023 storm, the big storm, is Fair Street. Will is going to talk us through what the significance of Fair Street in relation to every other path of stormwater in the village and then let us know what Han plans for repair there and what the process will look like going forward with permitting and then out to RFP, et cetera. And then after we do that, Will is going to stay on the call with us and we're going to have a conversation with the boat club. Thank you very much for coming in related to the you know, I want to say, I want to say breakwater every time, but it's not. It is a type of the word. Yes, I have both the bulkhead. I have breakwater in my vocabulary from childhood. So the bulkhead. Take it away, Will.
Good evening, everyone. Will Angelillo from Han Engineering. Oh, it says the host is disabled participant for screen sharing.
You just need to get your permissions.
So.
There we go. Now you should be good.
Okay. Great. Let's see. All right. So as the mayor mentioned, we've been working with the village on kind of gathering the information on where for stormwater concerns in the village and that was very much highlighted during that July storm event and then some of the subsequent large storm events from last summer. In the a lot of the flooding concerns that were seen in the village were along the Backbrook, Springbrook water course. So what we have here is a drainage basin of Backbrook. Backbrook is a, has a watershed area of about 160 acres and the water in Backbrook starts up on Bull Hill up in the Highland State Park and from up there, water begins to run off down the side of the hill and eventually collects, it starts to form a stream back on near the Nelsonville Woods. And at the ambulance corps, the stream enters a buried conveyance system, pipes, it starts to enter and gets conveyed under some private residences, under Main Street. Then it daylights again. As it daylights, it comes down towards Academy. Crosses under Academy, daylights again. Then it, at Chestnut Street goes back underground in an old stone lined culvert following along Main Street. And at Main Street, it crosses back towards the northwest. It's Backbrook between these residential properties from Maine to Northern. Crosses under Northern, comes out at the Springbrook complex. At the Springbrook now, and then it comes down to Fair Street where it then enters the culvert. So during the storms that we've been experiencing over the past year, some areas of concern were highlighted. Up at the, up near the source, we had at Cedar Street, there was backing up and flooding and overtopping onto Cedar Street and then onto subsequent private properties. We videoed this pipe underneath the private properties here. We saw that the old clay pipe, it's an old clay pipe that's conveying the Backbrook, which is in compromised condition, which will have to be addressed at some point. We had issues over at Mountain and Fishkill, which isn't in the Backbrook watershed, but it's adjacent to it and may play a role at some point in the future steps of addressing the concerns on Backbrook. At 138 Main Street over here, we had
Hey, Will?
Yes.
Can we pause for a second and note that as you're talking through which of the areas where it is complicated by the fact that the beginning of our, of the, at the village property line back up at Cedar Street
Yep.
is, was, it failed during the July storm, but it was not damaged. So it did not qualify for FEMA mitigation monies. So what Laura and Will and I are in the process of doing right now is looking for the grant system, the grant programs that we can use in combination with bonds, et cetera, to address the storms as they start, right? Sort of slow, to slow and retain the water before it gets to the village line itself. And then, as Will mentioned, at Fishkill and Mountain, that's one of the possibilities to be looked at for getting what is now running underneath private properties, including under houses themselves, into a public right of way down to potentially down to Fishkill and Mountain. So Fishkill and Mountain was damaged in the July storm and did qualify for FEMA mitigation. Okay. Take it away again.
All right. And certainly good information there.
And when, what, I'm sorry, what is the light blue line represent?
So the light blue line is the boundary of the drainage area. So everything within that blue line is flowing towards Fair Street and as through primarily Backbrook.
Basically, everything north of Main Street drains to Fair Street, except in that locate to that, to that culvert, except your neighborhood, Aaron, and the Undercliff neighborhood that gets conveyed over the surface along 9D toward Little Stony Point and then it enters a county culvert just beyond the village property line. But it all lands in the same spot, right there in that tidal property, that underwater parcel that belongs to the county, part of it belongs to the county. Actually, all of it belongs to the county. It's halfway within our border. So you have all of the, basically all of the stormwater from Main Street north and coming off Bull Hill on two sides, going toward one location. That is tidal. So when that pool is up, the pipe is filled. So it's very complicated and this is why we're, you know, almost a year in to get to solutions.
Yes. And then the, that brings us now to Fair Street where we had an actual collapse of the culvert. The, there's a 30 inch metal pipe under Fair Street that's conveyed along Fair Street. And right near the outlet, that pipe collapsed during the storm. So to address all these concerns, we have to start at the bottom of the watershed and work our way up. Because if you start at the top and work your way down, such as you might be able to convey water, if you enlarge, if you take a 18 inch pipe up, up at the top of this hill and it's too small to convey, it's a storm through it. So you put a 24 inch pipe, that 24 inch pipe then dumps into an 18 inch pipe. Well, now you're going to have back, backing up at the bot, the next segment down at that 18 inch pipe where it's connecting into. So that's why we're going to start at the bottom of Fair Street where there is a collapse and where all the stormwater comes to.
Now, when you say we're going to start, you mean we're proposing to start, right?
Yes. So after we've identified these different locations and concerns and looking at different options. We began to prepare plans.
And Will, if you could pause for a second, just so that Aaron comes, has this information and the public has it as well. So Fair Street was originally captured in the damage inventory by FEMA. Very late in the game, FEMA determined that that road qualified for federal highway money, which no one here knew. County, similar situation happened with a number of county roads that were damaged during the July storm and FEMA said, oh, we're out. You're going to have to work with federal highway. So we have been, Will has been reformulating everything we prepared for FEMA in the format required for the federal highway administration, which reviews via the DOT. So Aaron, this is one of the locations where we expect some percentage of the money back. Fingers crossed, it should be slightly higher from federal highway, but we're in that process of review right now. So what we're talking about now is the, the work that needs to happen for public safety on Fair Street. And we, the village will in some form probably end up paying, paying at the beginning and then amounts will be reimbursed as the aid packages come through. But it is all, right now, it is all a question mark.
Okay, thank you.
So what we're looking at here is Fair Street. Just so you know, north on this map here is pointing towards the left. So we got, we have Fair Street over here, running north to south, but south and highlighted in blue, Springbrook. And Springbrook is where, this is where Springbrook enters a 30 inch metal pipe, crosses underneath Fair Street and flows north via 30 inch pipe to that tidal inlet on the Hudson River. That's where it dumps out. That, as the mayor mentioned earlier, this outlet is under the influence of tidal conditions. So at low tide, that pipe is fully out of the water, but at high tides or high, high tides, that, that pipe is partially submerged. So that's a limiting factor on what we could do here. There's also limited coverage on this pipe, meaning that because we can't go any lower with the pipe, we also can't go any higher because of the elevation of Fair Street.
And when, when the pipe is partially submerged, is there backflow in the pipe?
Yes. So that water comes up to the, up, backs up the pipe, reducing the capacity of the pipe.
Okay, thanks.
Also on Fair Street, we have the Grandview Terrace neighborhood comes down this driveway via storm drains through the, this property's driveway. It comes down through an easement that town has.
Village.
Excuse me, village. Thank you. That pipe at one point connected to this catch basin on Fair Street. At some point, a number of years ago, the pipe collapsed and now it just flows out onto the hillside. It has started to reroute a channel down the hill onto Fair Street.
This is what you see. This is next to the Holmes property. Starts on the Airlit property. It goes along the Holmes property. This is when you see washouts of mud on Fair Street even before the July storm. That's why, because the village, the village for whatever reason abandoned maintenance on the easement. But it is part of, it is part of what needs to be resolved to address the flooding on Fair Street. And that is part of our application to federal highway or it separates? It is part of, we don't know yet. FEMA captured the slope, the slope way as part of its damage inventory. We are unclear yet whether our federal highway will cover it or not because it's off the roadway. Can we go back to FEMA? No. Wow. It's, um, it stinks. It stinks. The, the process of getting, you know, I think people have the impression that getting FEMA money is magic and then it comes easily and it's, and it's not, it's a lot of work to get it and you don't always get what you think you're going to get in terms of, in terms of recovery money. So we don't know yet. I'm hoping, my fingers are crossed, that I'm hoping that they will include it, that we'll find out. Okay. Sorry, Will.
No, all good information. So we took that big watershed, we put into a computer model and we ran different conditions to figure out how much water is getting to this point now, assuming all the water reached this point. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but the existing 30 inch culvert pipe was clearly undersized. It could not capture the water that's coming off of that watershed towards towards Fair Street. So we looked at different alternatives of pipes and what different storm events we could capture. We looked at box culverts, concrete pipe of different dimensions. As mentioned before, because we're limited in the outlet elevation and the cover over the pipe, the highest to any sort of pipe could be is 42 inches, three and a half feet. And balancing costs and what's economical, we're proposing two 42 inch pipes that will start at Springbrook, cross under Fair Street and then travel north approximately the exact same location as the existing pipe, except now it will be two, two 42 inch pipes, significantly increasing the capacity of the pipe and outletting into that tidal inlet. We're also proposing some additional catch basins along Fair Street and to reconnect and replace that storm system going through the easement connecting it into the proposed 242 inch pipes. Some of the problems with the existing pipe is that where pipes connect and intersect, there's no access. There's no manhole cover. There's no great inlet, making it very difficult to know what happens at those intersections. So anywhere we're having pipes connecting here or intersecting, we'll have a structure, a concrete structure with either a manhole access or an open grate as is appropriate. So we'll be able to, in the future, always perform necessary maintenance. Corrugated metal pipe was very commonly used, but it does tend to deteriorate. It has about 50 year lifespan. And as we see under Fair Street, a lot of that pipe, the bottom of that pipe has rotted away and is compromised. We're proposing what's called HDPE pipe. It's a plastic pipe. It has a lifespan of 100 years. And it's resistant to the brackish waters that might be experienced from the Hudson River and also from salts that might be used on the road during winter maintenance. Because that salt water, that salt that's put down on roads eventually gets into those drainage system and into the pipes and can corrode certain materials. So that's the Fair Street project in a nutshell. Once this project is completed, we can then move on and start looking at the next projects in the, in the Backbrook watershed. Because now we'll have a system that's large enough to accept additional runoff from the upstream areas.
It, it might be too early to make a call on this, but at least according to this drawing, it looks like it takes up quite a wide width of Fair Street.
Okay.
During this time?
So all the work is primarily located off of Fair Street and underneath the
Oh, I see.
Parking area.
Parking lot, yeah.
Okay.
So during construction, they might have a lane closed and have traffic, you know, alternating traffic flow. Those are sort of kind of details that come up with the contractor and any contractor on board can work at those details. Maybe reduce lane widths and contractor needs a certain amount, not certain amount of space so that we can perform the work safely. But we will be able to main traffic, maintain traffic through Fair Street. It won't be completely closed off. So the point we're at now is that we have prepared drawings. They are being reviewed by the DOT, which is, who is administering the federal highway money. The plan has also been submitted to the Department of Health because as part of this project, sections of water may need to be relocated and adjusted. So that way the pipes can fit in here and the sewer main that passes through the easement. And because the outlet is on the Hudson River, the project requires approval from the DEC, the Army, in the Army Corps of Engineers. So we'll be submitting to them next as part of this process to get the necessary permits to perform that work technically within the Hudson River.
I have a question, Liam.
Yes.
Will we be addressing the hillside culvert this class at the same time? Is that part of this project or is that a separate piece?
Can you remind me which is hillside?
Oh, across the street, basically at the, at the residence of Holmes, the Holmes, yeah.
So yes, that's this green pipe coming up.
So all of this is one project, all the green listed here?
Yes, we're including it all as one project. If we need to break it up and bid it as alternates because of what sort of funding we need, we can do that.
So also of note on the Holmes property, I mean, we sort of, we can't, we can't fix Fair Street without fixing this. The question is whether the funding all comes from federal highway or has to come from other sources. But among the reasons that that hillside is so important is not just the mud washouts, but as Will has pointed out, that easement was established back in the late 60s when the sewer system was extended up to the Undercliff neighborhood and it conveys water, not just stormwater, but water and wastewater. Standards today for depth and separation of water and wastewater are different than they were in 1968. What you, I have walked up there and been in that hole. It is a gaping hole that's, you know, at some points I'm over my head in the hole. Among the goals here would be to replace, bring up to code, the conveyances that are there. And then I think, Will, you're proposing to, it is currently a, you know, it's a gully. I think your proposal includes leveling it.
Yes. So it's part of the project.
What we were, what we are supposed to be doing under the easement is maintaining this as an access way for maintenance and we haven't. So trees have grown up. I mean, we're talking about decades. And when I say we, I don't mean the five of us. This is very old. It's a very old neglect. But reestablishing the capacity to even get there so that we're never in this position again. Is that accurate, Will?
Yes. So the, the pipe will be, the contractor will work his way up this slope, laying the new pipe in. And as he puts new pipe in, he'll bring in additional fill material to cover the pipe over and level back out the slope, removing that ravine that has formed through there.
And, and that will be done in a way that helps prevent future landslide conditions. That right? Like, they're probably
Yes.
to landscape it to, to reduce the likelihood of just the stormwater.
Yeah. So what's happening now, that's a lot of, causing a lot of the erosion is that that pipe coming through here that has collapsed and it's just discharging onto the, onto the slope. Is, you have a concentrated flow that's now a point discharge. And it's causing a lot of erosion. That is essentially a stream outletting onto the slope. With the proposed design, it will all be conveyed down to Fair Street. It won't be conveyed overland. It'll be conveyed via the pipe. So only the water from rainwater that falls in the slope is what will be traveling down this slope. Now will be a significant reduction in erosion experienced on that hillside. After the contractor's done with work, he will put down like an erosion control blanket so that way the soil stays there while vegetation gets established. Like a grass and primarily grass is what will be growing back there.
And Mayor Foley, just a clarification, you mentioned that wastewater sewer, I assume, is, is also in the same easement, but it's not in the same pipe. Right?
Correct. Sewer and stormwater are always separate.
Yeah, there's some old stuff here. So we're just, just good.
It needs to be, it needs to be brought up to code in terms of separation from drinking water lines and stormwater lines. So that would be part of the work as well, is bringing that section up to code. I want to make sure though, that we're setting expectations for ourselves and for the public. This, this is the best capacity we can get on Fair Street, given all of the variables, right? The, the depth, the, the slope down to the river, the amount of, of of water that we're dealing with coming down the mountains. This will improve greatly. But if we have a July storm again, we, we can't control the tides on the Hudson River. We are not stopping Fair Street and Mayor's Park from flooding. This area is an inundation plain and it is infill. It will be underwater periodically and at some point it will be underwater permanently. There's a reason that Fair Street used to be called River Road. That was the waterfront and, and infill was done to create a landfill, which is what's underneath Mayor's Park. So this is our best, Will, I'm going to say this and you say it as an engineer would properly say it. This is the, the highest capacity we can get in this location. But when we get a storm like July, which we probably will again, there may still be flooding from what's running off in, from the rainwater on the, on the mountains. What doesn't, what, what doesn't make it into the stormwater system itself.
Yes, that's, that's a very good point. We, we talk about storm return intervals as like the one year storm, the 25 year storm, the 100 year storm. Where context, our model shows that the existing pipe doesn't even convey the one year storm. That's a storm that's guaranteed to happen any year. It's overcapacity and that's assuming all the water in that watershed actually makes it to the Fair Street culvert under, as we know now, because there's other problems upstream that holds back some of that water, prevents the water from actually getting all the way down to Fair Street, which is why the 30 inch culvert worked for so long until very recently it collapsed. And didn't, doesn't work in any sort of extreme event. Because we're limited by cover over the pipe and economics to convey a 100 year storm through the, through this system of pipes would require such a huge culvert, something that would be in the order magnitude of 10 feet wide. Doesn't, isn't economical. Also doesn't make sense because during a 100 year storm would coincide with the 100, most likely, very probably coincide with a 100 year flood. And Fair Street is in the 100 year flood plain. So if the street is flooded, no matter the size of the culvert, So if the street is flooded, no matter the size of the culvert, it's not going to convey water because the street is underwater.
From above and from the river.
Yes.
That's just, that's just reality. It's, um, that's, I think that's a really helpful
context for us and putting in those terms well. So thank you. I think it also then reminds us that we need to be thinking holistically and about um, planning for flooding and looking upstream and trying to hold back some of the water and then also thinking about you know, kind of longer-term planning um, in different places and what makes sense, given that hundred-year floods happen much more frequently than every hundred years. That's helpful. Thank you.
Is.
Will, we have in the room, Mr. Hoffman is in the room. He's one of the private properties that's in that Cedar Street flood area.
Okay.
Sort of, among, among the things we do next is is that kind of big picture looking where we say, all right, where do we, where do we slow and retain water before it even gets to Cedar Street? How do we do that in the woods, working with Nelsonville and with parks to hold the water back and slow it down and get it out from underneath private properties where it shouldn't be in the first place? I mean, it was a hundred years ago. It's not, nobody here made those decisions, but that's what we're dealing with.
I mean, does slowing the water work? Because the water has to go somewhere, right? And it has to drain. So slowing just means we're flooding somebody else's property, does not.
It's like making retention basin, is it not? Go ahead, Will.
Yeah, so, um, that, I'm gonna switch back to this map over here. Mayor is is uh, kind of ta- talking about is up here on Cedar Street, looking into these, the Nelsonville Woods, and if there's ways to hold back stormwater up there. In the form of like a retention pond or something, uh, and that would release water at a much slower rate. And it would take a significant chunk of the watershed. It'd take a a large portion of the runoff coming off of Bull Hill. That starts down, uh, since it's the start of the tributary water. You could hold it back there and then release it into the conveyance system at a slower pace and then it doesn't overwhelm the conveyance and the pipes of the system. There may be other opportunities as well, looking at other means of conveyance. Water or other types of practices throughout the watershed.
And Aaron, so that, so that you know, I mean, we've talked about this a bit periodically in public session, but it's important to know that um, as we work with Will and Laura and I work on the grant side, we are working very closely with the village of Nelsonville and the town of Phillips Town and New York State Parks to say, look, we all have, we all own pieces of this. And in fact, the culvert where this all begins on Cedar Street is is not, is on um, the American Legion's property within the boundaries of the village of Nelsonville. There's no way we fix this problem without working intermunicipally um, and without approaching funding sources intermunicipally. And and Cedar Street connects into, Will, if you could go out a bit, detention further east and north in the wood, in the woodland areas also benefits Nelsonville. If you look, if you can point to Secor Street, so right now, there, there used to be a sort of a singular pathway from James Pond down to Cedar Street. It's hard, it's hard to see on this map, but in the December storm, the Secor Street stream, which comes out also onto private property, blew through its banks. And now water that used to go to Nelsonville comes to Cedar Street and into our system. So getting at some point, right now, we're tonight, we're talking about Fair Street, but know that we are looking holistically and we'll have, we'll come back to all of the municipal boards with proposals for how we work together to detain, retain and slow water for Cold Spring and Nelsonville and try to divert to other storm infrastructure that we have in place. Foundry Brook has a lot more capacity than the Backbrook pathway. Um, and has fewer homes along it. So bypassing and getting things going back toward Foundry Brook is one of the things we need to look at in addition to slowing down. So it's a really complicated problem that we have to start at the bottom so that we're ready to receive water again safely at Fair Street and we can pass through Fair Street safely. But ultimately, that's just the beginning of a very large do-over.
Quickly rerouting streams and creating ponds or things to catch the water so it slows down the path down the mountain, basically, that's rushing towards our villages.
And all the while, the climate is collapsing. And so it's not going to get better and we have to stop pretending it's going to get better. It's not going to and we need to be ready not just for storms this summer, but storms thirty years from now. So we have, it's, it's incumbent upon us and it is. It would be a misuse of public money not to look at this as a system and not to look at it holistically.
We see what not looking at it for a long time has brought to bear.
Can you talk, um, at other will or mayor, um, about the timeline for both Fair Street and the other pieces that are in, that are covered under FEMA? I guess I'm wondering how, how the sequences um, and also how our cost sequence. Um, and that, because I think that that is all, you know, that is the, those are the pieces that are already running and there are like the immediate things that we have to do and it's the immediate funding that we have. And then we're certainly doing this kind of bigger scale planning and looking at, um, looking at grants and thinking comprehensively, but.
All of the other damaged sites from the July storm that were identified in the FEMA inventory are stabilized. Fish Street, Mountain and Fish Gill. One thirty-eight main where Backbrook takes that sharp angle. And the visitor center is, has been finished. The tunnel is, the tunnel is on our list as well. All of those locations are stable and safe. That is, uh, while we do Fair Street. So Fair Street happens first and Will, you could, you could talk to the timeline of the permitting process and the RFP process to get us to construction at Fair Street.
We can ask one other question. My understanding is that there's kind of two phases of the FEMA funding. There's one of just the the rebuild back to what it was and have that covered. And then there's also an opportunity to get funding for sort of resilience. So it's a kind of bigger, you know, better. Is that?
That's sort of right.
Okay.
So in each of these locations, as part of the FEMA process, the FEMA review process, Will and his team had to prepare two sets of estimates, one for replacement and kind and one for mitigation. And what FEMA does not want you to do is put things back the way they were and have them flood again.
Yep.
So we provide both sets of numbers, but focus on the mitigation work itself. So the only place where that's in the reverse is, is that Backbrook between Garden Church Main and Northern, because at some point, it part, two, two sections, uh, one section of it is under private property. And at some point, it was put underground in that area. Putting it back underground is both in, in that spot, it needs to be daylit and it needs to be fortified. But going back to the stone culvert that was there is more expensive than materials that we would use today. So in that case, the mitigation, that is the one place where the mitigation is cheaper than the in-kind replacement.
And so when you said that everything is stable, that is not with sort of FEMA-funded repairs. We are waiting to do the mitigation and we can still do mitigation of those sites?
Yes, so FEMA knows that they are sandbagged, for example, Fish Street, which is the first street on the other side of, on the west side of the tracks. There, there's a, a Brick Dance Studio and then two little houses. The Fish Street culvert comes out on the Metro North property or sorry, it's, it's parts of it is on the Metro North property, part of it is on private property, but it's public infrastructure. Um, in that location, our team, Roadways and Facilities, have built up sandbagging to a much higher height around it and fortified that area so that when water comes, it has more capacity to take and not overtop. So that is considered stabilized by FEMA and waiting until we can come back and do the mitigation work that has to happen there, which will probably include, and our Will's current thinking and estimating includes opening it in the, in between the houses and larger culverts to take, to take the amounts of water that are going in that direction. That location is also alarmed so that if that, if the water level on the culvert gets up beyond a certain point, Bugsy and water, Bugsy and Matt get alarms to come in and manage. So by stable, we mean, we don't mean necessarily construction stable, but literally stabilized so that we know, we can't guarantee anything, right? But, but we feel confident that they're safe enough to come through a storm better than they did in July until the mitigation happens. Do you want to add anything to that, Will, or clarify?
I think that's a pretty good summary from, um, the FEMA perspective. You also asked about, um, kind of the regulatory permitting process. We hope to submit to the Army Corps of Engineers and the DEC, um, very soon. That requires endorsement from the county because part of the project is on the county's property. Uh, that review process, that, how long can that take? That's a really kind of a black box. The regulatory agencies are notoriously slow. We will apply as much pressure as we're able to and urge them, the, uh, the imperativeness of our project and uh, in hopes of them doing their review as swiftly as possible, as it possibly can. Then, once we have the necessary approvals, we can go out to bid and we'd, we'd put together a spec book along with plans and you give it to uh, the interested contractor who would then give a price on the, on the project. And bidding usually is about a month, month and a half. And then once we have the, the low, a responsible low bidder and award the project, we'd be ready to start construction. The intent, the, uh, construction would, would probably be about four to five months of intense construction. That's the actual kind of digging in the street. You know, there's a little, usually some additional time before construction starts. Reviewing shop drawings, getting everyone on board, awarding the contract, and then there's always a little extra time at the end, closing out the project. So on all the project might take, quote, to a year with the contractor. Nine months to a year, something like that. And of course, all timelines with site work are subject to the conditions of weather. If you have a wet summer or really snowy winter, it can slow down a project significantly. Uh, and those are outside the control of the contractor.
I was gonna ask a weather question. It, it doesn't sound like it's completely off limits in winter because of frozen ground or something like that. It's just weather permitting.
Yeah, a project like this, I think we could work through the winter as long as we don't have a real harsh winter. You wouldn't necessarily be able to put asphalt down, uh, in, in, if the contractor's finished before he's able to put the asphalt restoration, he'd put down a temporary asphalt and then come back in the spring and put down the permanent asphalt. Things like that.
And of course, part of what we will need to talk about is, you know, while, while this entire parking lot is torn apart, you know, what are the possibilities for inclusion of sidewalk, um, along that stretch? So while, while, while we've got things torn up, what are the possibilities there? Um, and that's part of, that's within the area that, um, the county received funding for from Congressman Lawler. So we are, we are talking with the planning department about what possibility there is. We've had some conversations with HHFT about their planning for Fair Street. Um, obviously, the underpinnings have to happen first and then we can talk about and at the same time, we need to be talking about what the outcome is.
Yeah.
Funding for that. I think let's first find out what's happening with federal highway because we've got lots of places that need chips money.
Yeah. Um, well, just, and, and I guess just the general point of, it's good if we're thinking about it soon so we can, yeah, to make a plan to make sure that funding isn't the reason that we don't do the sidewalks. That's a great point.
So just a couple more questions. The, um, so to summarize, we're, the plan is to replace the existing collapsed thirty-inch pipe with two forty-two-inch pipes to Fair Street. I think I did, I did some quick math. I think that's four times the capacity at low tide. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, it's in that order of magnitude, yeah.
Okay.
Times.
But that's only the first step of a project that'll work its way up, up the hill. Right, up to and then even into Nelsonville in collaboration with, with our partners. Do we think that this project in itself with the increased capacity might alleviate some flooding in the short term up the hill, like at, at Cedar Street, for example?
Not a chance. What, what comes off the mountain on Cedar Street is in an eight, goes to an eighteen-inch culvert. It does not matter. We, we keep it clean. But we, it doesn't matter how clean that pipe is. It's too small for the, the volume and the velocity of water it's taking. So the, the goal up there in the short term, while we're doing this planning, this is why we have the pump system. Now, and we've gotten permission to get on the American Legion property, we're in talks with American Legion, the American Legion about the property. Now, we, when we know big rain is coming, we set the pumps up back in the woods before the culvert entrance to pull the water down before it has the opportunity to overtop. Um, and that's been a process of trial and error that's gotten better through every storm. But more capacity down here will do nothing to help Cedar Street at this stage. Ultimately, it will, when there, when there's more sort of receiving pipe, but it's not going to have any short-term improvement in upper parts of the village. Will, is that a fair assessment?
Absolutely is. It will have, um, improvements on Fair Street in the area around Fair Street. And like the mayor said, that eighteen-inch pipe is the limiting factor up there and you can't.
And it connects to a ten-inch pipe. So the portion that goes under Roger's house and five and three Cedar Street is ten inches. So it goes from something too small to something really too small and then daylights. Um, I want, once it goes under Main Street. So it's, it's a very much a, a cobbled system that evolved organically and not with long-range planning. And so now we're trying to apply long-range planning to, uh, you know, a built-up historic residential community.
So in hindsight, was it a bad idea to put Cold Spring here?
A little late for that question.
Late for that one, yeah.
But we're so well named.
So Will, you at some point talked about, um, the possibility of a November start estimate. Are we still looking at that or do you think we're looking further out now?
Well, I, I like to be optimistic. I think it's, it's certainly conceivable. Like I said before, it really comes down to the, the permitting process. And also when the village is ready to have the funds in place to award a project like this, there's also that aspect.
And we've talked about something like three hundred thousand dollar price tag. Is that still what we're expecting for both pieces of this Fair Street project?
That was your estimate for the location.
What was the?
We've, uh, we've been talking about something like three hundred thousand dollars for Cold Springs portion.
Cold Springs portion, yes.
That sounds, I, and I sound like federal highway, there's no question mark.
That could shut. The overall mitigation estimate is one point five, right? Million?
Yes, it's in that order of magnitude.
So.
For this, for what we see on the screen.
Yes.
Correct. Okay, so with FEMA, it was one percentage. With highway, it's another percentage that potentially is higher. We don't know yet. Okay. But we're gonna have to, we, we were estimating when, when. But we're gonna have to, we we were estimating when when we were doing in the budget process, Michelle had the number in mind. Of three hundred thousand as what we're gonna need to put forward at least initially. So it is built, it is in a way built into the budget. And we. Hope for, and we hope for federal support. We don't have an option. There's no not do, there's no not fixing this is the point.
Right.
Anything else that you need from us, Will, or any further questions for Will?
Pretty drawings, thank you.
Okay, well, if you wouldn't mind staying with us, well, then we'll go to the next agenda item. So I want to say thank you first to the boat club for working through this process. In a really smart way and getting us to, y- yours is another location that has had neglect for a long time. Yeah, and like like the village, the current leadership at the boat club has inherited a deeply neglected property. The terms of the lease of the property. From the village to the boat club um includes the restoration of the bulkhead that was. Noted in the in the lease documentation, both parties acknowledged that. The question has been how to do it in a way that um. Needs all of our public safety concerns, all of our riverkeeper concerns, small R riverkeeper concerns. Um and what the what the club can afford to do. So. We've been working together back and forth over the last year to try to get to there to that point. Will and I'm sorry, is it? Matt, Matt Sorrell, who's um the consulting engineer of the boat club have been communicating. And I've asked um everyone to come in tonight and tell us about where you are um so that we can move you toward the permitting process.
Let me just give a brief backstory because last time we were here, we were presenting the vinyl sheeting and I just want to.
Yeah.
Get to how we how to move off of that for two reasons.
Why don't you introduce yourself, sorry?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mark Pannella, Commodore of the Cold Spring Boat Club. Um so we originally came here, we presented the vinyl sheeting idea, thinking that would be the best alternative uh for us. Not thinking that we would have to go into further studies and bore sampling because we already have sheet piling driven there. So once we learned that that would have to be part of the process, we were getting estimates that were absorbent to have the drillings done because they can't do them completely from land. They would have to be done partly from land, partly from water, which put the cost way out of sight. The other thing we learned during more investigation and talking to representatives and manufacturers, the vinyl sheeting only comes with a twenty year lifespan. So now we're like, we don't want to do all this work, all this permitting process for a twenty year lifespan. Uh for the village or our sake, for both of our sakes. So we went back to our original theme that the members of the club came with. Was I'll I'll use the term riprap or the rock, which is currently along the waterfront now, extending from dockside water park all the way up to the boat club property line there. So that's when we um elicited the help of Matt here from Sorrell Engineering, has a background in it. To help us come up with an idea that's a more permanent fixture that blends in and looks. Um and then I'm gonna let him speak to more about that and and the DEC's opinions on that.
And we should note that you also, we together have the responsibility for stewarding. The boat club site um as a brownfield. Um there was a manufactured gas plant there. It was remediated to the degree it could be in two thousand fifteen. What could not be removed was capped and left in place. There is an exclusion zone on the site where building is not permitted. Um so one of the things that had to be thought about in design was how do we make sure it's. Bulkhead is far from the location, but how do we make sure we're not doing anything at the water edge? That would imperil the cap.
Excellent point because whether we did the sheeting, you could have a potential to run into it again. Whether we did what was called it a a riprap bulkhead, you could run into it again because of the digging and the toeing have to be done. So Matt came up with what he's gonna present now, the erosion preservation plan that is least impactful for unearthing any coal tar. Um that could residually be out there.
Awesome.
All right, I'm not talking.
Well, thank you. I guess I'll just run through it quick. Uh my name is Matt Sorrell. I'm with Sorrell Engineering and uh. Mark and the rest of the ball club hired me to come up, you know, work together to come up with a scheme. Uh to do this. And what we looked at is we wanted to maybe get away from the bulkhead terminology and look at this more as an erosion protection and repair project. And the uh the scheme, the concept that we came up with is basically three points. Uh one is Mark alluded to, we're looking for durability. So we can, that's why, you know, that vinyl sheeting's got a very, you know, only twenty years. We don't want to have a major project and be doing maintenance for the, you know, the next. Twenty, thirty, fifty years on it. So, you know, rocks stacked up at a stable slope is, you know, nothing's permanent, but that's about as permanent as you're going to get as far as maintenance and as far as. You know. There's not gonna be any erosion of that, there's not gonna be durability, you're not gonna lose that rock material as long as it's stacked in a stable slope.
Well, we've seen that it works.
Exactly. And that's, that's a great segue to point number two, is we want to maintain the character of the site, uh looking at, you know. The adjacent properties, they do have that riprap slope. It's been there for twenty years, you said? More than that. And so we would simply be tying into that. So there would be, you know, some continuity of the uh the the rivers uh side right there. And it would be, uh call it a um. Maybe call it a soft solution, you know, it's not a big concrete wall, it's not a steel sheet pile or anything like, it's a natural material. Uh armoring that bank of the river. So I think that would be uh, you know, advantageous in many ways. I think it would be appealing. Many, I think we did get some positive feedback from the DEC saying that, you know, commending the boat club on, you know. This is a natural solution using natural materials to approach the problem. And the third um aspect of our approach is it's not in anybody's best interest to be be doing a major construction project right on the bank of the Hudson River. It's, you know, it'd be enormously expensive, we need to get in from marine engineering. Uh you're building copper dams, you're needing to protect the river and everything like that. So we did everything we could to try to stay out of the river. Um and, you know, we minimize the footprint that we can. We have to go out, we have to create that stable slope. But we wanted to minimize the impact on the river itself. And that's how we came up with a scheme to kind of pull back a little bit. Uh the boat club will be demolishing part of that concrete slab that's right there. And we're gonna try to pull everything back away from the riverside. To minimize the footprint of fill that's deposited in the river. Um so that's kind of the thinking behind the plan that we presented. And so the plan is just that, it is a. Another aspect of it, we're looking for something that's easily constructible. Uh we don't need a lot of heavy equipment, we don't need large cranes. Uh this is a project that be that can be affected using normal, I'll call it normal construction equipment, a backhoe, a small excavator, something like that. Uh regular, you know, over the road dump trucks. We're not talking massive barge mounted, you know, clamshell cranes or anything like that.
Would you uh, you might walk and see this diagram because it's not, I'm not used to looking at our conceptual diagram. So is this a top down view or cross section?
It's a plan view, top down view. Um so what you're looking at there, uh at the upper left hand corner, you see the north arrow. Upriver would be towards the right hand of the sheet, downriver would be towards the left hand of the sheet. Uh the. You see kind of the hatched area, that would be the the boundary of the riprap fill. That'd be kind of wrapping around the boat clubs. Uh existing uh concrete uh concrete slab that's right there. So that would be the fill that we're looking to put in. If you could scroll down maybe one more sheet, whoever's in control of this. There we go. Uh that that might be what you're looking at right there. And this is uh. You know, that that uh drawing that we showed before, it's great, you know, that's what it's gonna look like it's all done. One of the things I always think about when I'm working on a project is, okay, how did you get it there? And I mean, we can't have a plan that has a depositing rock fifty feet out into the river or anything like that. We've got to stay close to shore. And how are we gonna do that? How are we gonna do that without making a mess? How are we gonna do that with, you know, uh with appropriate erosion sediment control measures in place throughout that? And kind of the scheme we came up with is starting from the upper left hand corner. Um you'll see. Uh that right where the cursor is or where it was, that's the existing sheet pile right right there. That's the existing sheet pile. So we're gonna use that. To our advantage at first. And we're first, we're just gonna dump a little bit of stone over the over the side to create that stable tell. And then, as you go to the next uh figure to the right. Right now, now what we're gonna do, we have that sheet pile, that existing sheet pile is protecting the site. We can start to excavate out from behind it. And uh we can start to establish that stable slope going up, you know, up into the boat club's property right there. That dashed line would be that excavation line.
So excavating on what is now the broken up asphalt.
Correct, correct. Would be taking that out and all the while that sheet pile is protecting us from high tide. So that's a consideration that we're gonna leave that sheet pile there for right now.
So a- as I recall, my last visit, the sheet pile is collapsed. The sheet pile has fallen in.
Uh part of the site. What we're, what they're looking to is not pulling it out. Uh now, the the part that rotted off below it is still five to six feet, some areas fifteen feet down. So we're using that as a dam and a form to help us in that one area that where it's where it's completely broken down. That will help us. From that point forward, then we have full sheeting still to make the project rules more simpler.
So in that area, in that short area, sort of right where the tent is roughly, where the sheet piling is collapsed back. What is your, what is your, what is your stabilizing wall? I'm sorry, I have to say it a different way for me to understand it. What what is, what is holding up? Are you supporting that from behind and filling up to it?
We would have to do something, we're working with a contractor to do something temporary to support that, probably just kicking it like that. As you're saying, you could take some heavy timbers to support that from the. From the rear as you're excavating out.
But nothing that requires further. Pot pilings.
No, 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 we wouldn't be doing it. And we want to. And and any temporary measure we did, we take great pains to do that from the dry side. We want to stay out of the river. And we definitely do not want to be in the business of constructing a copper dam or putting any other sheet pilings out there into the river. We want to, again, minimize that footprint there. Okay, uh so then moving to the uh all the way on the right hand side of the top row, the third uh stage right there, construction. Uh once we've excavated that stable slope, what we could do is we could go in and start laying filter fabric and filter material, that bedding material. Uh I mean, uh we always place the large riprap, we place it in smaller stone just to help it uh. You know, settle and take its spot. It fills up those small voids a little bit. And again, we would be doing this. Protected from the effects of high tide behind either the existing sheet pile or some temporarily braced sheet pile that's already there. And then going to the uh first figure on uh stage four on the lower portion there. Now, what we'd be doing in manageable chunks, and one of the things you'll see on the notes and the drawing and the construction sequence, one of the things we're directing the contractor to do is we're not going to. We're not gonna take that sheet pile down the whole, the whole way. We're gonna try to leave up some of it and only do manageable chunks at a time. Uh and we're only, we're gonna try to accomplish that during the period of low tide. Because once that we demolish that existing sheet pile, there is the potential that, you know, a high tide could come back up and we and we do not want to be. You know, we don't want to have the water coming up on the unprepared slope. Uh so we're going to try to minimize that. I should go back up a little bit. All of this work will be constructed behind a turbidity curtain. It will be a turbidity curtain out into the river uh that would contain.
Like a boom?
It's like a boom, exactly. That would contain any fine material that was disturbed. So that would be effect, that is a normal erosion sediment control for uh practice that is used in this style of construction.
So we saw that here in the village when dockside was being, when the shoreline project was happening, there was that yellow, the yellow floating boom.
Yes, exactly. So um. Uh again, we don't want to demolish the entire life at one time because. You know, things happen. We want to make sure he's got enough rock material, riprap material on site to actually restore that slope. Um so when he's got material on site, he's got some time he can work with, we've got a good weather day, you know, we. You know, we don't want to be doing this in the rain where that slope's just gonna wash right off into the river. He can go ahead, we'll cut back some of that sheet piling and then we'll go in and we'll uh move it towards the the fifth and final stage right there where we would. Create that riprap burn. And that would be going back into the uh uh the. Where that existing asphalted area is, it'll be going back into there a little bit, and that's how we would.
A little bit is like what?
We're looking at that ten feet or so.
So then, so you'll, you would use some of, lose some of the usable area. Of of the front of the of the dock area, not the dock dock area, but the. I'm gonna say bulkhead area because I don't know what else to say. The the concrete, the asphalt area where you have the tent. You're gonna lose uh about ten feet of that. What happens where? On the, on the waterfront park side, it's, it is uh riprap met by grass. Wha- what is the interface between the usable asphalt area for the club and the riprap?
And so for one, if you could go back maybe one page, you look at that in plan. All right, so you're talking over on the right side right there.
Talking about what separates the area where people are. Congregating from the riprap.
That.
What's the cap?
That slab, if you're down here and look at that ten foot section that's falling in, that. The end that's up towards the yard, which I'll say is actually in line with the village's riprap.
So how will you end, what will you use to end the asphalt? I don't know how else to ask the question.
It's gonna merge right in.
It pulls up the aerial on Google Maps, right? Is that what you're saying? It would just extend. Like this, right? Well, actually, if you don't mind stepping to look at this image and then I can ask the question more intelligently. So here.
Yes.
We're on the village side, this is grassy area. What's gonna be here?
That should be.
At the top of riprap.
If you look here. Uh again, we should be matching that slope. So here, let's look at the tiltway and I'm gonna get this oriented correctly. All right, so here's the river. That, you know, that's north, roughly north, right? So we're, we're not taking out this entire slab, right? We're only cutting back.
Right.
Ten feet. So we're going to fairly close to match that that slope that's right there.
This part will still be.
Right. So, right, exactly. So if you look at that, only about half of that existing slab is scheduled for demolition. And so if you look at this, kind of where that color changes right there.
Yeah.
That's approximately as far, but that's about ten feet.
So if I'm standing on that line.
If you're standing on that line, yeah.
What am I, what am I looking at? What am I standing?
You're standing, well, as you're, well, if you're standing on there, you'd be at the top of the slope, kind of. You'd have one foot on that concrete and one foot would be on the riprap. Because that would be the top of the slope.
So the concrete is, is it edged? Is it?
No, no, um so. No, 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 that's fine. Um if I understand your question correctly.
Basically, what keeps, if I ask it a different way, it may help. What keeps the asphalt?
Concrete, that's that.
Oh, I'm sorry, what keeps the concrete from breaking down at the edge where it joins the riprap? What is the finish on the concrete at that point?
Maybe we have cloth of some sort? Kind of turn the concrete down if you have to.
I mean, it could be smaller stone. It would just, the.
How are you gonna form the concrete on the end? Maybe that's a way to ask the question.
Well, it's an existing concrete right that that's right there. So it'd just be saw cutting right along.
Saw cutting.
It would be a saw cut that existing slab and you would just bring the rock up.
So the rock will come up over top of that saw cut edge.
You could either bring it up over top or you can match it. You would, you would want to have something that would be, you know, not too intrusive. I mean, I wouldn't bring it up like a huge berm. Uh but I would either try to match it up and try to hit the top of that slab or maybe just slightly above.
The reason that I'm asking the question, and and Will, you and I talk together together a lot, so if you can. If you have a better way of interpreting what I'm asking, let me know. What I'm wondering is, as people are at the edge of the wa- right at the, on the village side. It's soil that's compacted. If it's concrete on your side where it joins the riprap. What keeps that concrete over time where the rock? Has spaces among it, what keeps the concrete from breaking down there? Is it the depth of the concrete and the and a square of the form?
Yeah, it's well, and that's why I have a fence line too.
Wouldn't expect a.
Say that again?
It's right on the fence line.
So that you're gonna have a fence there regarding.
The fence currently goes right to the edge of that slab.
Got it.
So somebody from the, from the village park couldn't be standing on a corner of there. That's gonna be inside the boat club property. That's what the stink was set up.
I wasn't so much worried about that. I was worried about how it would last over time.
Stone will fill it, fill it with smaller stone and make it an easy transition.
And would someone step?
Yeah.
Right from, how would they get to the boats? Yes.
So.
Stepping right.
And that brings us to look at a couple of things. And and what we've decided, one of two things, we can put an embutment in there, a concrete embutment within the stone. To keep our ramp going out on the north side like it currently does. Um or we were even thinking about, we move the entrance now to our south side, having only one entrance. And then we would connect our north and south docks via a runner.
You're talking about the water entrance?
Yes, so we might, we may not be putting a north entrance in anymore. We may just be keeping one entrance for for multiple reasons. It helps us out. Um one of them being that since we we are trying to. Keep good account of who's coming in and who's going out to boats. There's only one point of entrance now instead of two. So that's something we'll be investigating also. Once we start getting prices on what this project's gonna cost.
So at some point, you'll have a proposed dock configuration. And I'm not asking because. We care so much about how you put your docks in, but then we know that when the code enforcement officer is going down and looking at the construction, he knows ahead of time.
Yes, we're either gonna be.
What your entrances are gonna be.
To anchor that ramp or we may not be, we may, we may put it in, we talked also, put it in anyway, just in case we want to keep it that way. It's gonna come down to the price, what what they're gonna charge us to do that uh for that.
So how does a person traverse from? The. Recreation surface to a dock. What do they, what do they?
They're walking a concrete slab. They're walking a concrete slab.
How are they transitioning from the concrete slab to the dock? Right now you have the ramp. So the ramp anchors at the top?
Yes, yes. So you're talking permanently now.
I know, I, I have a sense of how it works currently and it sounds like it's going to be similar in the new configuration. Instead of, instead of sheet piling underneath where the ramp comes up, it's riprap.
Right, and then it, it would have a platform, a cement platform or a wood platform. I'm not sure you have to go right there. So they wouldn't be walking on the riprap. The embutment would be up. We would have a transition up to that, excuse me, and then the ramp down to the docks. Or we're not going to have them walking on riprap or stuff like that.
So the code enforcement officer has looked at this and, and said he felt that it generally met the concerns that we raised when we looked at the first plan a year ago. Will, do you have any additional feedback?
Um, I haven't done a detailed look through these plans, but taking a quick look through them before, I saw that some of our previous comments have been, were addressed and incorporated into the plan. So it's really great to see that. I think this seems like a good solution here and an effective solution.
I have a, I have a few questions and, and thank you for that. Could you, could you go to the next set of diagrams, please? So this is the, I understand the construction process here. And in stage four, I understand the, this retaining wall will be demolished only in sections. Say you pause while it's halfway demolished. Don't we have, and there's riprap coming up to part of it. Don't we have a risk of high tide, the water leaking around the backside of the wall and eroding the undemolished parts without riprap?
Uh, yes. So to answer your question, you're looking at a temporary construction condition. What the contractor would have to do during, you know, after he stabilized for the days, he would, or finished work for the days, he would have to stabilize. Whether that's just some sandbags or something like that. He would, because you're exactly right. There would be a, an edge right there where water could potentially get around that. But what he could do is he would just sandbag that area to protect it, you know, overnight. Come back in the next morning, we'd take down the sandbags. If he's got a good workday, you know, a good weather day, he could take that down and move forward. The way I'm envisioning this is you just kind of leapfrog his way down that, you know, that hundred, hundred twenty-five foot stretch of the, of the shoreline.
Right. I, I, I worry that the, I mean, is there a way that we can make sure that the project, there's funds, there's fully funds available to the boat club to complete the project before it started, for example? I mean, I'm not, you know, because I feel like it would be incredibly damaging to pause at any moment during this process.
What is the plan for, for funding and what is your timeline?
We, we have funding. We're just waiting to see what the.
You have, you have full funding for the full project?
Well, that, that's a good question because
That's not a big yet.
Once, you know, it's not up to big yet because we don't have the approved set of plans. So once we have this, we have a general idea what it's going to cost, talking to some contractors and we have the funds. If we need to raise some more, we can. But we have, we've been, we've been anticipating this for years to come. So we have a capital reserve account which we feed into every year. So we know this was coming, so.
And you anticipate this happening over a single season, yeah?
We, we would like, in a, in a perfect world, that this would be happening fall, winter this year.
After this, because you've already got the docks in now.
Yeah. Docks out, fall, winter.
And we should note that the docks are in, but the club has worked with the code enforcement officer to restrict access to the part that is damaged. So there, no one's walking across that damage area to get to the dock. Aaron, were there other questions that you have?
Yes, you know, it just seems over a period of, he said fall, winter, I don't know, three months or something like that. Or even a month to demolish that wall and stages and, and, and fill, and put in the fill. It just seems pretty risky, especially during the winter months. I, I'm not an expert, so I would be relying on the experts to help ensure me, you know, show me that it's fine to do this sort of underwater construction at periods of high tide and low tide and, and freezing river from time to time, although it doesn't freeze much anymore. You know, and, and the, the risk would be minimal because what I, of course, I think we're all worried about is that we start having massive erosion, much bigger than the 10 feet that's been planned for.
And the, you know, again, this is going before the D E C, the Army Corps of Engineers. So they're obviously not going to let us go forward with anything that, that wouldn't be done. And in the fall, winter months, you run the less risk of these storms, the July storms, the rainfall. We're, we're not dealing with generally heavy rainstorms.
You can't say that. You can't anymore. December, January, February, we had flooding rainstorms. You can't say that.
And, and we're projected to have more active than usual hurricane season this year.
I think it'll be tomorrow.
Everything's upside down now. This is what, this is what the world looks like now. Yeah.
Right. And I appreciate that there are limited options and a lot of constraints here. Just if, you know, if there's a more attention there because it's like this, you remove even part of that wall and there's a lot of water on the other side, right? It's an entire river worth. And where is that water going to go? It's going to go everywhere it can. And, you know, it's just, I worry about washing out half of the boat club property.
I don't, I don't generally see that. I mean, we have a ramp in the boat club. I mean, if the water doesn't come up and wash us out. I mean, we literally have a ramp into the river. So I.
I mean, I get what you're saying.
What I'm saying, the water's not coming up and it's not even coming up to me.
I mean, you know, I think we should assume and, and are safe and assumption that like the D E C, the Army Corps, like engineers who do this for a living will make a plan to do this properly. I mean, they know better than any of us sitting here how to manage a construction project in water. So, I mean, I, I'm assuming, you know, like I.
It's all going before.
Right. I, you know, I mean, Aaron, I appreciate your concern, but I think the point is to have professionals who do this take on this work versus us speculating is, is the better, a better.
I agree. And I made the point, I made the point very early on that I trust the engineers and this is not an area of expertise. We are trustees of village property and this is village property. So there, it's worth my, and all of us noting the areas of concern that we have. And so that as the process goes forward, we can revisit this and, and ask the professional opinions.
Agreed. I will say where we began a year ago was a very different place that to everyone sitting at this table was worried about. Where you've come provides me with a lot more confidence. Again, I'm not, as Aaron is not, I am not an engineer, but our, our engineer is saying, yeah, this, I mean, this looks good. This addresses the issues that we raised. One thing I'd like to throw out to all of you as we think about flooding on Lower Main Street. I don't know, Will, if Bugsy has talked to you about this or not, but one of the things that he has contemplated to help reduce the amount of water. No, we're not going to ever be able to, to, to reduce to any great degree without a massive wall, the tide water coming over. But he has contemplated raising the level of the riprap along the rest of the waterfront to try to stem some of the debris. I know he was, he's planning on talking to you about that. I would love if that conversation could happen among the three of you because if it makes sense to be raising the riprap on the rest of the shoreline, it makes sense to meet that level. So if you two can, 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 can continue to have that conversation, I, I believe that we also need D E C approval to do even that, to raise the riprap. But it, it seems like a, a good time to have that conversation. So it all works of a piece. Has Bugsy reached out to you about that, Will?
No, I, this is the first I'm hearing of it, but it's an interesting thought. Yes, certainly.
I, I don't know, I don't know what merit there is in it. Once the water's high, the water's high.
Yeah, like you, like you mentioned.
Ideas. We've been, we've been, for the last few storms, we have been stretching to try to protect the homes. We cannot protect them from the water, but to try to minimize the trees and the devilheads and the crap that comes up out of the river. We've been stretching hurricane fencing along the waterfront before a storm. And it, it has helped to reduce the debris. And that's, that's what led him to thinking about higher riprap.
I would, I would just say too, as we're thinking, you know, we were talking about long-term planning for the rainfall flooding. Also going to start to be talking about long-term planning for
Waterways.
Like Hudson River flooding. And so I think it makes, it totally makes sense to move forward with this now. And also I think we'll probably be having conversations of the village and about sort of more system level, you know, more system level discussions of the river.
Absolutely.
Welcome your participation in that.
The, the good thing about having gone in this direction is that it leaves more options open.
Yeah.
Things that I would like to see, you said you had feedback from the D E C. I would love if you would forward that and, and the, the full document. That would be great. We have electronic copies of the drawings. Will has them. The building inspector has them.
Rock is also updated all the applications because we had to obviously go through and change them because just for the public notice, we, this is a joint venture. So we both have to sign off on it. So he updated to meet these current plans and to meet the adjustments that were suggested by the D E C.
So if you would send that to Will and then Will, after, Will, you said you wanted to have one more look? Is that right? You want another pass through? So send the application to Will, please. And he has, the drawings that he has up, those are the current ones, correct?
They look at the current, yes.
Just the D E C comments have to be added to.
There's some relatively minor comments, notes and stuff like that.
Okay, so when you're ready. Send it to Will, copy me. So I know they've gone. Once Will gives us the okay, the board will have a conversation about giving me authorization to sign the permit. Because we're the property owner and they're the tenant, we sign together. Have we covered what we thought we needed to cover? I appreciate it very much. We're, I think you're in a much better place than you were a year ago. And ultimately, I think you're spending more wisely this way.
We'll see what rocks cost.
Well, I mean, and it'll look nicer than vinyl, vinyl sheeting. Right on. Sitting around for the other conversation. I thought it was helpful for you here as well. Okay, so we have a pile of board business, but most, most of it is not complicated. The first is a quote from T Q. Last week, last time we were together, we asked for some clarification on automated lookups of out-of-state license plates. I was wondering if the cost was covered by, was, was, was put to the person paying the ticket. The answer is, and LaLiza, make sure I get this right, they are de minimis charges because it is, it is a not frequently used service. But in using it, we are likely to recover funding. So it's worth the investment of the per-use cost.
Great, exactly. We can't send things to the collections agency if they're out-of-state plates that haven't been checked through the service. And so if we send it to the collections agency, we can get, you know, a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty dollars from the ticket. They have a much higher rate of collecting the funds than we will without them. So, you know, we won't have that money if we don't spend the two dollars and fifty cents.
Right.
To look up the weight.
Got it. And I agree with Aaron. It's a very strange way to lay this out as a quote, but now having talked through the logic, I get it.
And the quote that we're looking at only reflects our usage currently. So if, you know, the usage changes, then the price will change, but we only get charged per use. So this is just a, like estimate based on what we currently do.
Cool. Any discussion? Would you like to make a motion, LaLiza?
I'll make a motion to approve the quote from T Q Systems for automated lookups of out-of-state license plates.
Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Was that an aye, Aaron?
An aye.
Alright, managed technology approvals. I anticipated questions you might ask, Aaron. So our tech contracts.
I have read it.
Okay, well, it makes sense now, now that it, I mean, it has made sense that it, so that you know. We have separate contracts with managed technologies for police, shared services, which is water, wastewater, highway, village offices. Because they were brought online at different times. The police have to have a different type of secure server than we have for the rest of the, of the functions of the village. So we have these two, two, two contracts. We did explore last year whether it, we, there were any cost efficiencies to combining them into a single contract there or not. So we proceeded as they were. What's in front of us tonight is several things. To get it in the order of the, of the agenda. One is that the officer in charge, Officer in Charge Jackson has requested a laptop so that he can do more administrative work in the evenings from his home. And that seems like a reasonable request. He has also asked, requested a separate O I C duty phone so that he is, calls are filtered from his personal calls. And I don't think that's an unreasonable ask. Questions or concerns on that one? And we have it in the budget. So I would make the motion to accept Managed Technologies' quote for a laptop and laptop for the officer in charge. All in favor?
Aye.
The second is the renewal of the department's own contract. Someone like to make a motion?
And that's also already in our budget.
Yeah, it's already in my budget. I understand. It's a renewal of our existing contract. I'll make a motion to accept the Managed Technologies Police Contract renewal. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then the last is a revision to the water and wastewater contracts. The phone has been upgraded. It was a very, very old iPhone that had actually been rolled over by one of the trucks some time ago. But it also is no longer taking a charge. So this covers the new phone.
That is unprobable. I mean.
Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I can motion to the Information Technology Service and Maintenance Amendment for the Highway Department for 2024.
Water, water.
Water, sorry, water treatment plant and Highway Department.
And the village.
It's a three. Oh, sorry. Yes, I, I was thinking the village of Cold Spring.
Shared services contract.
Thank you. Shared service contract for Village of Cold Spring Water Treatment Plant and Highway Department.
Second? LaLiza gave the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, I, I.
So no, no opposed, right? Okay. The next is also related to wastewater. The best that I can do to explain what this piece of equipment is, is to tell you that when the power goes out and the generator needs to kick in so that waste, the wastewater department can keep functioning so that the, the pumps and the filters and all the things can be, keep functioning. There is a piece of equipment that communicates to the generator, alarm, alarm, power lost, you need to kick on. It's that piece of equipment that has failed and needs to be replaced. That is the best I have got for you. Would someone like to make a motion?
M-PAC 1500. I mean, that's all I have to say.
What? Oh, M-PAC, the M-PAC 1500. I make a motion to authorize the purchase of the new M-PAC 1500 service replacement for the water, wastewater treatment plant. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Next up, when a new, when a business opens in the village and intends to pursue a liquor license, the village is notified by the New York State Liquor Authority. This is a request from the attorney assisting the new owners of the Cozy Corner Cafe Corp, formerly Hudson Hills, to secure their liquor license. And they are asking that the village support a request for a waiver of the 30-day wait period so that they can get rolling with selling tasty drinks. Discussion? That's what I'd like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. We'll make a motion, uh, to approve the request for waiver of the thirty day waiting period notice to municipality for an application for a liquor license for the Cozy Corner Cafe Corporation.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Good luck today. Yeah, welcome. It's nice to have people sitting on the court again. Okay, so the next item is similar because the regulation of cannabis in New York is similar in many ways to the regulation of, of alcohol. Um, when an application, when a perk, when a license is applied for at the state level, the village is notified that that application is being pursued. Um, we have no, um, we have no current complete application related to where this would be. It is proposed at forty Main Street, but we have no land use application for that. For that use. So this is the Office of Cannabis Management informing us. There are a few things that, um, I would like to, I would like to make known because we have now two of these. Two requests and neither of the licenses have been granted. And New York State does have minimum requirements for distance between dispensaries and adult use areas and for distances from churches and schools. Um, and I would like to document to New York State. They don't know our village the way we do. I would like to document to the Cannabis Authority where the, where applications are in relation to those items to be sure that they are keeping track as they should be. So at, the option at the end of this application um, is for the municipality to request a one-time thirty day extension for the municipality to provide their opinion. Or if the municipality or community board has any comments, concerns, or questions. Um, I would like to ask the board to allow me to request that thirty day extension so that we can document. Um, I can draft for your, for your review. The things that I'd like to put on the record with New York State. Is that good? Okay. All in favor?
Yeah.
Hi.
And, and just, just for clarity, because I, I think, I think you all know the answer, but there's a lot of people who are probably watching this and interested. My understanding is the village does not have the authority to approve or deny this application, right?
That is correct. It, like, like the liquor request that came before, we are simply notified by the state licensing authority.
Right. The only thing we have, um, the right to do is to send a letter, as the mayor said, stating conditions or things that we want the, the authority to know.
And I would note that any application, whether it's for a cannabis dispensary or any other kind of retail um, in the village, if it's a change of use, has to go through the planning board process, um, and also has to go through a certificate of occupancy process, just like any other business.
Right.
Okay. Anything else on that one? Okay. Let's see. Next is several approvals for use, or applications for use of village parks. Um, first is Mayor's Park. It's the Fish and Fur Club. The folks who put on the fishing derby, they want to have a picnic at Mayor's Park on June nineteenth at, from three to nine. Any concerns?
Um, are they gonna use municipal lot for parking?
Um, that, yeah, they've been told that the parking lot is out of service and they'll need to either uh, use the municipal lot or walk.
It's also, uh, Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
Right, it's Juneteenth. Um, so all, so, I guess the municipal lot's not free, but but there's not.
It's not a residential parking or, yeah.
There's not a crush for parking there.
That's good. Um, and it has been approved by the, although there are no markups on this one, I don't know why we got this copy. Um, but I did speak with the events coordinator today and she has she has vetted it with police, highway, fire, and ambulance corps. So, and the recognition commission has proved it. So someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the application, um, from the Fish and Fur Club, uh, to use Mayor's Park, um, six nineteen, twenty twenty four.
Okay. Okay. Hi, Liza. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Now, the next, we don't see a lot of applications for dockside, but suddenly there are a whole lot of people wanting to get married to dockside. So let's, I'm gonna put them, I'd put them in date order, so it might be slightly different than what's on the agenda, but it does, it's more logical to me that way. So the first is September twenty first. Uh, an exchange of wedding vows from three thirty to four thirty. The it has been vetted with the, uh, events coordinator. This currently, under our current rec code, this does not go to the rec commission. Dockside requests come just to this board. So this is the first pass. Um, and we are the final approval. At some point, when we get through other priorities, I would like us to look at that process and look at the application for dockside. I think it can be made more user-friendly. And I think that this is something that can go to, that potentially could go to rec. That we need, you know, we need to have a conversation about process and, and how it gets managed on the staff side and on the board side. But for, for now, Ms. Buchi has put in an application for three thirty to four thirty for vows and wanting to be sort of just inside just, just beyond the, um, sorry, the entrance to, to dockside, sort of at the first curb of the driveway. With the best of you.
Is that a weekend?
Yeah, it's a, let's see, the fourth and Saturday.
Uh, we don't, do we, we don't close off the area. They're, they're just giving the permission to use.
Correct. And New York State does not allow the closing of the park. It, it always has to be open to the public and the folks who have applied have been made aware of that, that they have onlookers and photographers.
Do we, um, do we allow, uh, the, like, a vehicle to go in and?
They need to, there is a permit. They need to have a permit for the vehicle. Um, that was a question we can, and if.
Will there be?
No, if they're, if they're, if they are, if they have a tent, if it's larger than ten feet square, it needs to have, um, it doesn't.
It doesn't.
If it were to have a tent. If it's larger than ten feet square, it needs a permit from the code enforcement officer. I don't see them having asked for chairs. I would have to ask Lillian. I don't know that detail. Which we can table this if we'd like. Do we get that information? I also would like to have confirmation because what the copy that we have here doesn't have the markup that the deposit, or sorry, that the payment was received.
And, and we don't, uh, we don't give guidance necessarily about parking, for example, right? Because it seems like.
There is no, there are no, there's no vehicular entrance to dockside. Um, we identify where public parking is available, but it's not, it's not our responsibility to provide them parking.
Well, it looks like they're having a reception at Hudson House, which would mean they probably would have access to the Hudson House lot. So that problem may be solved that way.
Right.
Um. And it is, it's thirty to fifty people, I think is the number provided.
Fifty to sixty.
Fifty to sixty.
Yeah. I, I personally see no problem with approving this. Even if they brought in chairs, I don't see that would be a problem. They're, they're just going to be those.
Now, or, yeah. If they're bringing in, we do need to know if they're bringing in anything by vehicle though, because they need to have a permit to do that. And the, the chain needs to be taken down and put back up.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so I would say I'm comfortable conditionally approving it with that uh, confirmation of that item in mind, that they understand about the vehicles and and the confirmation that the payment's been made.
Yep.
That's helpful. So that's my motion to make.
Also feel that.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Let me just take notes real quick, so remember to follow up with Lillian. I think there's, there are a lot of ways that this can be, this permit can be approved. This permit hasn't been modified since two thousand eighteen. Um, and it's it needs improvement. Okay. So the next one is April, I'm sorry, October fifth, which is also a Saturday, I believe. Is that right? Yeah, okay. Um, they, they would like to have, you see it on the map, this has already been, the services have been vetted with Lillian, police, fire, et cetera, et cetera. They want to have a porta potty delivered the day before and put out in the, in the turnaround, the end of the lot. So for that, again, they'll need to have, they'll need to work with the village to get the gate open, et cetera.
Which, uh, which is the name on this one? I just want to.
This is.
Paul Quine Schmidt.
Say again, please?
Paul Quine Schmidt.
Okay.
It's dated for October fifth.
And it's three thirty to five. Offsite, offsite reception, not a reception at dockside. I would, I mean, I think the same thing, the same things. I'm comfortable so long as we know about deliveries. And, and payment. And so my motion is to accept those clarifications, those conditions. Okay. All in favor?
Okay.
The last is ten days later, October tenth.
Which is not a weekend.
Thursday. Thursday. Uh, wedding five thirty to six thirty. The, the, um, when the packets were printed, the map was not included. Kelly made copies and provided. They should be sitting at your desk.
Yep.
They want to be out at the edge of the park, near the boat launch.
Kind of makes everyone switch to a different spot.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. It's only fifteen people.
Yes.
It's really lovely. Small and private.
Except for everyone else who's gonna be hanging out.
On Thursday.
Carrying them on.
There's no.
Any concerns?
No.
Okay, same conditions?
Yeah, sure.
Make a motion to approve with the same conditions.
Okay.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Um, the next, something I don't want to read into the record, but I will. Um, Karen Herbert has been our board secretary since COVID. Um, she, she took a job that was an online job um, and which became an in-person job two days a week. And then, um, doing the minutes and managing, operating the, the recording equipment for all of our standing boards. Um, and she has loved the work, but she's tired of doing late nights, um, and wants to do other things. So she has um, submitted her letter of resignation effective June seventh. I have enjoyed my time in service to the Village of Cold Spring and will miss all of you, village staff and residents alike. Please know that I will continue to visit and enjoy the view of the Hudson from the Village of Cold Spring. So I will sadly make a motion to accept Karen's resignation as of the seventh and wish her well. Second. All in favor?
Hi.
And last week, um, the board met and appointed, uh, Jane Rosenfeld to the position. We are re configuring, um, office staff a bit. Jane will be working, um, she'll be taking some of what sat with the clerk, with Jeff Badakovich as clerk. Um, and will be the, the one-stop shop for managing land use applications from the time people come in to make inquiries to having their applications referred by the code enforcement officer, then on helping them prepare for the land use meeting process and then running the meetings. So she'll be in, she'll have regular office hours five days a week. Uh, the hours will adjust slightly the day after meetings. Um, this is a new position and she has been in twice to train with, with Karen while she is transitioning out of her other position and she will start full-time on G P. So they will have overlap. Great, great stuff. Welcome, Jane.
Very good.
And the next, we, um, I have been making a recommendation to appoint Gregory Henson to the position of village, village clerk treasurer at a salary of thirty dollars an hour, effective five twenty-three, twenty twenty-four tomorrow. Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. So there will be overlap between, a bit of overlap between Jeff and Greg. Um, they are already communicating and planning their time, to use their time effectively together. Um, I think everybody's gonna be really happy to have Greg with us and we look forward to working with him.
Very good.
Okay. Approval of minutes, three, six. Any issues with the minutes?
No.
I know. Good. Okay. Oh, Karen?
No problem.
To approve the minutes, stay with three, six, twenty twenty four.
Second. Sweep seconds up. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, who's got the bills? Number done.
I'll do those. Um, approval of bills, that's number seven, three, eight, seven, for the amount of sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right. Um, Michael, you're the only member of the public left. Anything from you? Okay. Motion to adjourn. So all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a safe trip home, Aaron.
Bye.